Welcome to town hall number ninety five, closing in on one hundred. It's um April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. And today we're joined by Clement, Colleen, Curtis, Elizabeth, Felix, Gorga, Hogan, Judith, Mikasa, Nebula, Nicola, Peter Duke, Rob, Stephen, Taffo, Vanessa, Fazu, Walter, William and Olokoji. Thanks all for being here. Great group. Um yeah, today's the monthly workgroup update town hall, uh where all the workgroups have, let's say about five minutes um time to uh to give an update on what they're doing and what they will be doing in the coming month. Um yeah, as you can see on screen, that's the main portion of the agenda today. If there's any room at the end uh for open topics, yeah, feel free to, but let's first see how far we got. And starting off with a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we do. Basically, we're a group of uh people that are all in tune with the Singularity Net mission and vision and want to contribute to it. And we have a wide range of self-organizing workgroups. Um I'm not gonna list them all, but if you're interested in helping out, you can hop onto our Discord server. There's a getting started channel and that will help you get started. So hope to see you there. Uh then two quick mentions uh before jumping in um. Right now, there's um a governance decision uh ongoing for the core contributors on the workgroup budgets for Q two. Uh you can find this in the quarterly budget sheet. Uh there every workgroup has its own form. Um. Top of mind, please somebody in the audience help me when the deadline for this is? I'm inclined to say end of week or maybe Tuesday, but please do correct me.
We already looked at results in this week's strategic call. So basically thirty minutes into that call, they part losses.
Okay, okay. And that being this Thursday is the second of May. It's gonna be a close call of the recording of this town hall will be live, but for those present, um yeah, if you're a co-contributor, um do check out the proposals and uh give, yeah, your approval or objections. And then a second callout being uh the decentralization blueprint, still being very much open for comments and input. Let me see if I can quickly grab the link. Uh not without screwing up the screen sharing. Um I'll grab that.
Is it still a thirty-eight page document?
Sorry, I didn't fully catch that. Is this?
Is is this a license proof document, still a thirty-eight fucking page document or uh?
No, we may, way more pages by now.
Fuck, wait, okay. Last time I looked at, nah.
Uh I think it's at sixty-eight.
Sixty, sixty-nine.
And counting.
Sixty.
Wow. Um that sounds like you have at least one comment, Felix. It's too long.
Yeah, it's like. Like, I understand, it's clear, it's uh it it has a lot which it which it has to cover, right? But I think expecting positive feedback from community on their sixty-plus pages document is yeah, it's great. It's great. Sorry, I'm a little in trouble tonight.
No worries, no worries. It 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 is a bit daunting. Uh yeah, for sure. I mean, it's a big document. What can I say?
So it's partially a big document. If nobody's looked at, I mean, if you haven't looked at it yourself, one of the reasons it's a large document is there's a framework used to scaffold it, right? So it's outlined in a very particular way, which has a lot of subsections. So it is not sixty pages of single-line text, right? Um so in that regard, it's not nearly as long as it sounds. And if you are at all interested in commenting, what we are really looking for at this phase are people who want to um review, you know, something that they have expertise in around additions, gaps that are missing, um corrections, um not overall commentary on the piece itself, right? That is gonna be left for phase two, when it's actually, you know, sort of like, here's the blueprint, you know, do with it what you will. Um so like Vanessa added some really critical comments. Uh Peter has added some key things, like I've tagged Yon like for very specific questions about different sections. Um so if you ha- TiVo has made some good comments. Um so if you, you know, that's the, that's the goal for um reviewing at this stage.
Yeah, absolutely. Um well, seeing uh right before the call, I'm I'm already mentioned um that you're not uh like the blueprint itself is not in the list of workgroups within the ambassador program. But since we're on the topic anyway, might as well, if you have any further updates to share on it right now, yeah, might as well go there, maybe? I see some questions.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not a workgroup, partly because it was, you know, a mandate to the supervisory council to write it um with the goal of creating decentralization experiments that the community can decide to, you know, take on at the recommendation uh of the supervisory council. So that's the, so we are, I would say we're like ninety percent finished at this point. Um the goal is by next Friday to have a finished, like, good first. I I'm using the word draft, right? Because the idea is that it gets revised on a regular basis, but a good, a good first blueprint, right? Version one point oh. Um so that's where we are. Um you know, it really covers broadly speaking, like, things the community has done, um challenges given the structure of Singularity Net, um and ideas for Singularity Net. Those are like broadly speaking, um covering like vision, mission and purpose, operations, and then how to actually affect change.
Um I I see in chat, there's a, there's a bit of conversation around um licensing and attribution of of contributions.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Would you have anything to share on that?
Yeah, um. I think this is a broad topic uh in general, that the community, right? There's a lot of legal liability issues overall with how the Singularity Net is structured. Um I am not an attorney, so none of this is legal advice. Um but um intellectual property overall for how the organization operates, it's, you know, again, it's not clear. What gets attributed to whom, right? Um there are two appendices, like Peter said, um and in terms of attribution of who comments, uh the comments, you can, I believe there is a way of seeing comments even once they are resolved. Um but none of this is being written, right? Like on-chain, it's a Google Doc, and so you're signed in as you are or you're anonymous, and that's the format that the document was agreed to be written in. Um and since that was the agreed-upon format, that's how it's being written. Um if people want, if people don't like the way things are, you know, attribution is made, please feel free to ping me with your ideas or suggestions. Um I think in general, we've tried to, we've tried to um uh indicate everyone who has contributed um to the document itself. So I believe, and if we haven't, you know, I've only gone through it once in terms of adding names, so by the end, anyone who does make uh additions to it or changes will be, will be listed as a contributor to the document, in the document. And if you wish to stay anonymous, right, that's your prerogative also.
Yeah, fair. Um Stephen asking if the document isn't open source documents.
Um. It's open source in the sense that you can be given editor access, but not, or commenter access, right? Uh but there still is a person with permissions, the same way any Google Doc is, where there's still someone that controls it. Um, right? This is the nature of working on a document collaboratively. Um but it is open source in the sense that we are being transparent about where the document is, what's being written, what the comments are, and who's allowed to comment on it.
Does look like Stephen has a follow-up question. Go for it.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Elizabeth. With respect, there is no sense to open source. A a document is open source or is not open source. Open source means it has an open source license. If it doesn't have an open source license, it's a proprietary document. It means that you can do anything you want with it, and there's no responsibility on your part to uh attribute or to recognize contributions. Entirely in the editors, the owners, you become the owners of the document. So my question is, what assurance, uh there's no assurance to contributors in that case. Also, just because it's collaborative, it doesn't, an open source document doesn't even need to be collaborative, by the way. You can just create a document and give it an open source license. Okay, this is about um the status of the document, how it's going to be used in future, whether it will be open source in future. Um the attribution on the contribution side is also related to um how you handle the contributions to it, which could be seen as a separate issue. So you know, you sent me?
Mm-hmm, absolutely. So it doesn't have an open source license. I don't have any idea from a technical level how you do that with something like a Google Doc, right? Because it's in Google Suite, which is owned by, you know, the the account is owned by somebody. So personally, I don't know that answer. Um in terms of what happens to it afterward, I believe that would be the purview of the ambassadors or the foundation, who together decided to do an experiment around electing a supervisory council, right? Um so from that perspective, any draft of the document that you can see, you know, you could archive up to IPFS and it would live there like that. Um what happens in the future of to the document depends on, I think, what the community decides wants to happen to the document, right? And this is where that communication bridge between the units of Singularity Net really comes into play, which is one of the main takeaways of the document, that there's really no checks and balances or a way to hold the foundation accountable by the community for doing certain things. So that's really up. That's up to you.
I hear what you're saying, but there's a kind of um trust and assurance issue, you see, because these are about fundamental principles. Um the way that we work in our workgroup is that all the work we do is open source and contribution. We, when we came in, actually, by the way, Peter, into the ambassador program, into Singularity Net, used to have a commitment to open source on the front page of its website as well, okay? I, my understanding is that Singularity Net and is committed to open source in general as part of benevolent AI. So it's a straightforward question. You, so you're basically, the answer is if there's no open source, it's not, it's proprietary. And it's entirely at the discretion of a group of people who own the document to do what they will. Now, it isn't decentralized, by the way. That's highly centralized. And
Well, just step in there for a second, because I I do want to point out, I I do want to point out um that this is not something Elizabeth decides on and and wants to enforce or something. I I think that would be primarily um uh the task force that that writes the document as a whole, um supervisory council, foundation might also have a word on that.
Yeah, I would just encourage people not to, I would just encourage people.
Proprietary documents. I don't think that temptation is there.
Yeah, I just think you should put a warning, a warning on the document that says that, that you, your contribution is not assured of being open source.
Yeah, technically, we can do that.
Yes, and I also, if you, if you have any interest in writing that up as a comment um in the document or in, you know, tagging me in Discord with that comment so that I can add that or I can bring that to the supervisory council, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I just, I I do want to add that I think there's nobody in either the task force or the community or the foundation that would argue against having this as an open source document. And sure, you're right, it's not saying that at the top right now, and thanks for flagging, but to then take it super black and white and and put it as, ah, there's not, this is super bad. It's like, yeah, I'm not sure if that's the right approach, to be honest.
Yeah, and I think overall, right, the the foundation is super centralized and therefore any extension of the foundation, unless otherwise stated and not even just stated, right, but mechanisms in for it to enforce that is by extension centralized. And that's the whole point of the blueprint, to attempt to try to create experiments to decentralize. So I don't want to take up any more time in the meeting, since technically this is a work print, a work group. Um so if, you know, again, like, feel free to message me here or on Discord. I I am like writing my little introduction here in the in introduction channel, um so everyone can see me in here. Um and happy to raise these concerns with the committee itself.
Thanks a lot for that. I I would estimate they're more than happy than uh to to open source the documents. Uh but Judith, you have your hand up.
Um just an additional comment on the blueprint contribution. We had another chat with the supervisory council on Monday, and we just wanted to remind everybody that is actively contributing um that they keep track of their hours, if they wanna get uh rewarded for their hours, so that they, everyone that comments, that they keep track themselves of their hours and then request what they would like to get paid for it. Since a while ago, we did make the offer that we can have a group session and we can put in a request for getting paid for that, but I guess the group didn't organize itself. So now everyone is contributing by themselves. So just a reminder to keep track of your hours if you wanna get rewarded. And then you can either send that to me or to anyone at the supervisory council.
Thanks a lot for that. Um then I think that's, yeah, for now, it covers the topic. Um. Looking at the clock, we better get going with the not very short list. Um. Just bringing up on the chat a little bit, um Stephen advising people to not contribute until this is resolved. Yeah, people are free to do that. Taffo collecting hours in the work process channel and yes, you're right, Vanessa. And that's, I I do want to move to that um portion, but I also do want to create some space for discussing the topic. Uh it's a balance. Maybe we'll have some more time uh available at the very end, but I I do want to get started on the list of workgroups, otherwise we'll never um yeah, get through that list. So please don't see me as, uh see this as me cutting off the topic. And we can also continue it on Discord, of course. All right, um. Yeah, basically, the list is uh based on the calendar, starting uh after today's town hall. So that uh brings the knowledge-based workgroup in the very first spot. Um and as we've done earlier in uh these calls, if you have uh multiple workgroups in case of Taffo uh to cover, uh feel free to do them as one chunk, uh no need to yeah, fully wait until the the list such as, yeah, so so. Um yeah, so definitely, if I may ask you to take the stage.
Okay. Um well, I will start with a random, not random sequence, but a different sequence. So starting with uh the start of the week, and that would be the first thing we do is operations. And today, we had another three-hour session. We had a lot of updates, might be recently doing this uh ex-aud as well, our internal like user experience and and how the data itself has been more fluid, less of these uh execution anecdotes. Um so yeah, that's kind of going along, and we have, yeah, more facilitators now. I think the new one is joining, so we kind of changed our system, so we have more facilitators, so it's kind of have like a schedule now. But if new people want to join it, they actually need to wait for, or maybe even five weeks before they can, the turn comes up to, to put their selves to test and manage the exercise and the transactions to other people. Yeah, funny mistakes always happen, even like things that come up a year ago, and errors that have automated come up in new ways now. And that's due to, yeah, also like automation changes on treasury and also the way we are they're allowing people to budget, so every workgroup is also experimenting their own ways. And sometimes that kind of reflects back to the um the data itself and we we are confused again, so some task has been pushed back as always. In the GQ, we do not have that much time to discuss them though, and that's why usually in Thursdays, where we have been focusing on crunching down that general budget results, which also saw on the early call today that budgets are out, we are consenting, and here my tip for you is, and the way I see consenting is like providing your, your, like, your feet, your insight or intention, what you think is valid and and could exercise to have in this ambassador program. So and some people are like, maybe I need to know every detail of the proposal. But for example, for me, I don't need to go every single document that Treasury or like some other Quid has provided. I can see them in the down halls, I can see their results in Discord, I can see their contribution on same, and that already gives me this intuition that they they are here for ambassador program, they're trying to help this program forward to be their own ways. So yeah, my consent is already there, and I also want to kind of to to show that that I I support others. So yeah, if you are core contributor and you have a consent and you feel like, um maybe my decision is not that important because I just happened here one month, I wouldn't say think so. If you are core contributor, we are certainly waiting your voice and to show what kind of direction you want this ambassador program to take us, because eventually it will scale. It will much, get much more complicated, and then we have to start deciding what do we stay out. Right now, we have this opportunity that we have more budget than proposals, requests, but it will change at some point. And the more practice we have making decisions, what is good, what, how do we want to kind of mingle here, with what kind of experiments we want to have, what we want to try then, we need to kind of keep ourselves reminded of what others do, and proposals are a great way to do that. Um so yeah, in the between, I have this T work people workgroup, a knowledge-based workgroup. And T work is focusing on onboarding to like internal T work management. And the good thing, Gimbala Labs, uh that's a great thing, Gimbala Labs stand line, they're down quite often, which um doesn't allow like this on-chain activities and sometimes makes it feel like the site is done. But actually, the course is online, it is now getting updated correctly, so every time we push a new change, also on my website is a new change. So it has a new structure, the onboarding is split into three now, and yeah, from the first last two cohort of students, we have updated all the small sentences, things that people notice, and basically, it's like a new course now. Well, it's not a new course, but it should be end-to-end flow. So yeah, you can join there. Also, it's rewarded if you go through that and then do the tasks and the things and actions that are provided throughout the course. And with knowledge-based workgroup, we are now, we've finished our asynchronous task on organizing. So the next session tomorrow, we will be reviewing that, and if we are successful with our async, uh which we are basically double manning up, so two people are organizing one task. And if it works out and with the quality of results is pretty good, we are going to open it up and scale it more uh over the ambassador program, so that we can move forward and with organized results and start updating ambassador kitbook. Um I guess that's kind of covers the main all the progress. Oh, there is a not the work prepared called Process Quid, and there was this discussion that to try the swarm AI application. However, the unanimous I who is providing that has not yet responded back with training session, they canceled the last one. So to that, I'm also kind of extending the process call session to further way to to see if we can try our ambassador program, kind of review sentiment session with a new tool and with some nifty, yeah, things and activities. If not, I still think the process call sessions should happen. Also, there is a process call proposal, though that is also a way to kind of signal this. Let's add that session. And now, no.
Thanks a lot. Uh halfway in, I realized, I was doing this timer thing the previous time. I'm not doing that right now, but then that's super awkward to do that while you were going. Uh uh thanks, Tom. Um. Well, next one on the list that's everybody can see is uh archival. Um.
One question. One question, I can't remember everybody. Can I jump ahead? Because I have to jump off.
Yeah, go for it.
Oh, good. Then we got that. Um I think we're on second slide, governance workgroup. One important update, and everybody is that we said for the core contributor to this decision, so when we have to make a decision for the whole ambassador program, relevant for specific goals or workgroups. Each time we will actually uh we update the concrete, because this, so each new decision will trigger uh update on the contributors list. And this for every decision, which is really good. Add to governance workgroup, generate a massive shout-out. There's a bunch of good stuff happening over the last week, two months, where we arrive quite effectively to identify address and solve topics, everything governance, most in the decision-making process and everything there. And really huge shout-out to onboarding and treasury, who will help a lot on this actually. So all of that, this is really awesome, and we experimented a lot with cool new decision-making processes, systems, models, and yeah, getting better each time. And biggest achievement is that we moved from nine contributors to fifty-one now, which is congratulations, everybody. Ambassadors as such do not exist anymore as decision-makers in the governance program, and it's fully uh not fully, oh, we are, we are on this channel for fucking years, we will never finish that, but I mean, they're pretty awesome. Uh the footsteps I had, so thanks for everybody joining and contributing there.
Well, and right back at you, thanks, Anton, for popping back in on on the governance side of things. Uh I I do have one tiny um comment there. Um the document listed fifty-one. I thought like, this doesn't look like fifty-one, it's forty-one when you actually count it.
Yeah.
But still, that's a great, great amount, uh a great number.
Thanks for the correction.
Um thanks a lot. Uh that brings us to education.
Are we going back to archives first?
Oh. You see, you knew, yes, of course we can, yes.
All right. Yeah, so it's been a really busy month, um really busy April for archives, and we've got a huge amount of work going on. So I had to be a bit selective. First of all, we're working with Ubio, who many of you know, to look at AI tooling for the archives. And this month, we've been looking at how best to organize our data to improve AI search functionality. And parallel with this, Stephen has been starting on some really interesting work, looking at RAG processes. That's Retrieval Augmented Generation for archive searching. And that's basically, I mean, it's really interesting, look into it, Google it. Um it's basically about telling an LLM when it answers a query to go and reference an authoritative data source outside of what it was trained on. For example, it could be the Archives corpus, so that is gonna hopefully progress us quite a long way. Because we've got to admit, at the moment, the Archives kitbook is not super searchable, and we want it to be. Um another thing that's emerged from, emerged from the kind of focus we've got on AI is that we've been writing an AI ethics policy for the archives. And with our workgroup's emphasis on the core principles of of open source, as you might have seen in the chat, we kind of We kind of trying to work it together with open source principles too. Um eventually, we think it would be amazing if all work groups considered having some kind of AI ethics policy. So we're trying to like beat a path for others to follow maybe. And we'd be really excited if it ended up maybe feeding into some of the work of the new AI ethics um work group. Which I I assume will get funded, I I don't know. Anyway. Um another part of the process is the work we've been doing around tagging and data cleaning. The archive prior to twenty twenty-four, before we had the meeting summary tool, is quite thinly tagged, to be honest. So we've got a brilliant group of six people who are now working on sorting that, and I'm doing a bit of work on other data cleaning and tidying. And that makes it easier to use L L Ms with it. We've also been looking particularly at how we record and capture governance. So there is a governance kit book in existence that hardly anybody knows exists, and it's currently almost empty. And at the moment, we're structuring it so that we can bring in lots of archival material in there to track our various governance experiments, and that's going to go right back to the governance document that Felix spearheaded months and months ago, almost a year ago. To the core contributors consent process that is going on right now for approval of workgroup budgets. To even looking beyond the ambassadors, to look at things like the decentralization blueprint, we're looking at how we document, archive and track that. And related to that, we're doing some really interesting work on how we archive and open source the documents that people include in their meeting summaries, so including the comments and linking them to their context. So that's all about how we, for instance, avoid data loss if something gets deleted by accident, which has happened before in the ambassadors program. Ways of tracking the evolution of issues via comments in a doc and questions of attribution and community IP, and guess what, open source and who gets heard. So yeah, that's kind of what we're at at the moment, and our next meeting is tomorrow at twelve o'clock UTC. And the link is on the calendar, so we'd love to see people who are interested in this stuff at that meeting.
See, you call out the twelfth, when I look at my screen, it's thirteen, apologies for that, twelve you to see tomorrow. Thanks, Tom. Um next on the list is education, but I'm not quite sure if we have a representative right now in the room. Do speak up if you feel you are. Sometimes sled option a bit light, uh maybe that will happen in a bit um. Yeah, I think just for practical reasons, uh moving on to um R and D. Which I'm also not quite sure who to appoint uh or ask um on the status update. We have quite some members in the room, anybody feels?
Hey, hey, everyone, I'm on transit, I just pop a message on the on the chat. I have my kid in the car, it's gonna be a bit noisy, so whoever on the team, Walter, Curtis, um Duke, you guys wanna jump and give us an update? Of last call, last meeting, please, please be free to join.
Uh yeah, sure, I've just pulled up the R and D agenda items and meeting notes from last week. And we did talk about and researched uh into some of the S net offerings and a process in which we could provide um our feedback to the S net foundation. And we researched in this case the the meta-language um as one of the items that we would start that conversation with. Uh it seems we also researched into the Citizen OS as a governance sandbox tool and a bit of the future future tools that we plan to use internally within our guild to structure ourselves. Uh that's kind of the the gist of what I see in our notes, apologies for not being prepared.
No worries at all, um we'll keep it nice and concise. Any additions from other work group members on that, or is it good to go?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I think um um one one other thing we talked about in the last meeting was um um the research work we're doing on inclusivity of disabled people in the ecosystem. Yeah, it was um it was a broad, broad um search work. Right, because we realize that some people in the ecosystem may have issues fitting into the due to one stability or the other, so we talked, we talked about that too.
Thanks a lot for that addition. Uh audio to me personally was a little bit uh, well, low quality. Uh but I don't know what you're referring to, um on on accessibility for um gap people with well, any disability pretty much, um but yeah, researching into that and and improving accessibility, which I think is very commendable. Um all right, that concludes R and D, uh then next on the list is treasury.
I kind of keep my bit on all the five.
Uh fair, fair, um I won't make you do it again. I was, yeah, sorry, I find myself um looking for. Never mind. Alright, uh yeah, this like does come with a reminder on the public uh calendar of all the community calls we have got going on. Uh if you haven't added it to your own uh Google Calendar, please do. Right, um thirteen minutes remaining, it's gonna be a tight one, um moving on to onboarding. See, we have in the room.
Yeah, hello, everyone. Yeah, so I'd be reporting for the onboarding um work group. So I'll start with the fact that we had a treasury session with Andre on the eighteenth of April, you know, um we got information and you know how payments are processed in the Singularity Net Ambassador's program. How to identify rewards, you know, and other treasury topics. Um where to find a transaction hash, you know, the overview of the treasury dashboard and many other things there. And then we've also um completed a quarterly report, right? So um maybe Vani could help, you know, put that in the chat box. Yeah, thank you very much, Vani. And um we also did um some collaborations with the Gamer's Guild, you know, to assist them test their Roblox game. And then we also working on a boarding and journey with six to, you know, on the study, the different experiences of persons, especially new persons. Right, as they navigate through the um and ultimately become members of the um various work groups and guilds um in the S net ambassadors program. I'm pretty sure that once we're done with that, we'll put it out for everybody else to see. And then we've also implemented a mentorship framework, what we call the body system. Where we assign newbies, right, who are just onboarding to more experienced persons for the purpose of guidance as they navigate the ambassador's program. And that's pretty much, and then yeah, providing everybody to join us. Um the onboarding work group is always open for everyone who's interested to come, you know. We meet um Thursdays thirteen UTC, and then to become a member, you've got to attend three consecutive meetings in a month. Or five consecutive meetings over the quarter, so that's pretty much for most, thank you.
Thanks a lot for that comments. Um then Walter called out in chat um.
Just wanted to promote that education group uh there is. Uh so they work on uh doing those infographics and videos for all these spinoffs is being wrapped up and we've talked about doing more interesting stuff, uh kind of like educating with AI and educating about AI. Um so there is a weekly meeting tomorrow. Um at anyways, it's on a Discord events calendar. Um so yeah, stop by.
Thanks a lot. Uh I I do think, yeah, this this fifteen you to see on the slide is accurate uh for education. Uh so yeah, tomorrow fifteen UTC. Alright, uh moving on to marketing guilds. Um Judith, any updates from your side?
Um yeah, um so we created the community engagement group, which is now live. And last week, we had our first introductory call with Lloyd from the Singularity Net Marketing Team to give an overview over the initiative and how people can submit their proposals. And we did distribute a form in the marketing guild Discord where people can put in their ideas and um community engagement proposals with uh request for funding. Um the process is still a little bit slow because we still have to figure out some bits and pieces regarding the payment. Which we do need to have another call with Esther and some other people. However, Esther is currently on vacation, so it will still be a while until we figure out the process. Um on the call, we decided that the proposals are going to be reviewed by a committee of two to three people, and over the past days, I have received um everybody's um interest uh or everybody's messages indicating interest in who wants to be a proposal reviewer. Right now, we have, I think, eight people that said they would wanna be a proposal reviewer. However, currently, we only have three proposals, so we still have to figure out. Um yeah, who's gonna be a proposal reviewer for now, and I'm pretty sure we're gonna rotate the roles. Um also, side note, the marketing guild meetings are not happening anymore, so this will be a proposal based based group, not a meeting based group. So yes, please have a little bit of patience while we figure out the last um things around the logistics of this group before we start promoting the form more. Um. And yeah, I think that's it.
Uh I'll yeah, make sure to remove the Friday meeting call out there. Alright.
I think it's removed.
No, I mean on the slides specifically, it's it is off the calendar, you're right.
Okay.
Uh that brings me to writers work group. Caniche. Are you with us?
Yeah, I did. Hi, guys, um hello, everyone. Um actually, uh pretty short updates today. Um we didn't actually reach our quota for articles um based of our um KPIs uh to publish for the month. I was not feeling too good, so we had a little bit of a lapse there, but uh thank you, I'm feeling better now. And to actually address that, we have our first scribes. Um which falls aligned also with our KPI and our roadmap. So the scribes are going to take on tasks like um the editor circle, and they're gonna be in charge of editing most of the articles coming from the scribblers and other content uh moving forward. Uh so they might also be assisting with other tasks. Basically, the scribe role provides more responsibility and accountability for uh contributors within the work group. So uh yeah, looking forward to scaling that role, so we can have more scribblers and over time, eventually more scribes. Um also, we actually uh with the trivia, our trivia has been running smoothly. From next month, though, we are going to be shifting towards strategic uh and fixed tribias in a week. So basically, what that means is our first week of each month moving forward would be based off uh last month's updates. So everyone in the uh that takes the trigger uh would be, would have to like uh read up our month summary to understand what has happened in the ecosystem and the ambassador program in the last month. That will be our trivia for the first week of each month moving forward. Then the second week would be based on articles that were written or published on our Substack or Medium page. And then the third week on this, after the second week, uh we'll be doing a vote right to the trivia channel there to figure out what the next week should be about. We are thinking to make it more engaging, so that way it'd be a default uh but vary from uh entertainment, music, movies, uh basically anything. Uh anything the committee might be interested in for the third week's trivia to make it more lively. And the fourth week would be articles so far, again, we're gonna be going with that structure. Also, uh the only thing that changed again would be our Zili. Uh the our past Zilis have been successful, but um also quite strenuous, and they might be uh actually, after fleshing out some things, realized that it's be more efficient and much better if we have monthly Zili sprint. So from the month of May, we're gonna be having monthly spirit all throughout the month. And uh the structure for the rewards will also change, so I'll be posting that in the Zili channel, everyone can keep an eye out for that. Um also, yeah, we uh our point system has been um doing really well. If any work group or guild is interested in using this point system as a reward mechanism or loyalty points mechanism for the contributors in the work group or guild, please uh feel free to reach out to me so I can provide you the template you can work with and explain to you how the point system works. So yeah, from uh the writers, that's basically it. Uh you can expect lots and lots of content coming up on our Medium page for May. We have a lot planned out, including uh announcing our anniversary for the ambassador program. So yeah, we have that coming up too, since uh next month is May. And um yeah, we also have our Substack's first uh publication will be going out very soon. I'll be sure to announce that in the marketing guild channel and also in the general channel for those interested. The Substack will be launching with uh an introductory article about the entire program and what we've been up to. And also, it will contain, and moving forward, it will be containing um a Q one recap, which is basically a recap of everything that has happened in all the guilds and all the workgroups uh for each quarter. Uh it's something that we've been looking at now, and now with the new scribe role, you are able to facilitate that, yeah, even better. So uh yeah, we've been collecting information from all the meeting summaries and uh the town all monthly updates such as this to um provide a full overview for anyone who's interested. It is a cover some read, pretty pretty long read, but uh for anyone who is interested in any specific work group, will be able to go there and basically understand everything the work group has been doing from January or to uh March, and we already have another recap for Q two already in progress, so that way it's gonna be like uh pretty much smoother. And uh another thing to note is that uh we are uh we have a lot of things in our KPIs that we're trying to achieve for this uh Q two. But most of them are going to be to set up yeah our Q three uh KPIs basically. So yeah, uh you can expect a lot from the writers' work group uh for next month. And uh yeah, we are uh doing some awesome things, feel free to join us, uh we are still looking for more scribblers. So if you're trying to join our meeting, just like I said, there on Friday fourteen to see, then hop onto the call, the link is always in the event box on our Discord, and you can join us and uh we'd be more than happy to get you on board it. Thank you very much.
Great stuff. Thanks a lot. Um next one on the list is the video work group, and I'm not super sure if I should be asking for Lloyd Kessi or Cartano Claus, um anybody in the room to represent video work group? Silence. Yeah, in that case, uh I'm not gonna make stuff up, so we'll have to skip that for now. Looks like, um alright, um. Same question on gamers guilds, I see sled not being here impacts quite a lot of um work groups or updates on work groups. Anybody in the room to represent gamers guild? Looks like we are gonna make it in time in this case, that's a plus. Um because the list is about to conclude, um we did cover governance work group already. And on moderators work group, I can be relatively short, um the only thing happened so far is um the budget um request for Q two. Um yeah, as you can see on the slide, I figured that mentioned um this work group won't have like a weekly calls, it will simply have a chat, since well, all the moderation is on chats. I think that's uh gonna surface there. Um yeah, so basically what will happen is I'll um invite everybody. Um, yeah, so basically what will happen is I'll um invite everybody into the channel. It's it's a bit tricky because the topics to be discussed in the moderation, I I don't think it should be public. Um. But then how do you invite people into a non-public group if you're not quite sure if they will fit into the workgroup? So that's a little puzzle I'm uh trying to solve right now. And I think that's kind of covers for now. Um. Yeah, quick check in the in the room. Are there any questions? Any other topics we should be touching on? If they're relatively short, uh, we can do so.
Is there anything special down for next week's town hall? Is there any particular topic or?
Not yet. Um. No, no, would be the answer. I think it's running my mind. Um.
I don't know. I was just thinking maybe we should um foreground that whole discussion about um open source, or maybe we should foreground the whole thing about contribution and attribution.
No, I mean, yes, we can, but I I did do a ping to the task force, checking if there's any objections. Like, I I really haven't heard.
Okay.
Against it, so I think.
I suppose I was thinking more about the whole thing that TiVo's trying to do in um Discord about how we actually, you know, who's gonna be paid for what and trying to work out an attribution system for contributions to the doc. Because if we don't do it in a town hall, we're never gonna. There isn't really any space to do it.
Well, um, Judith mentioned a couple of times, but by now that the supervisory council is very happy to host a session as well. And we could request them to host a session on this, and then they would be in the same room right at the.
I get that, but I wonder if we need to talk about it as a community first before we go and talk to them.
Hmm, fair. Um. I'm not sure, to be honest. I see three hands up. Um, let's see. If they're on the same topic, uh, please do step up. Judith saying no. Walter and Taffo, if if you're on the same topic, please do speak. And all the hands are down. All right.
I yield to Judith.
Well, I I'm I'm trying to, oh, okay. So Vanessa, yes, for now, sure. Um. I think we can have uh a block on that during the tunnel. Um. Yeah, that's that's just ready answer there, I guess. Okay, then I'll uh pop back to the previous uh order of hands, which, if I'm correct, was Judith first.
Sorry. Um, just a reminder that deep funding is still looking for eligibility reviewers. I think they have received quite a few um applications through the form, which you can find in the deep funding channel in Discord. I can share it here as well if I, I'll find it and share it here as well. Um, yeah, but just a reminder that if you still wanna apply, you can.
Judith, eligibility here means?
The people that are scanning the proposals to see if they're eligible to, um, well, that they're eligible to to take part in deep funding round four.
So it's like the 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 formal checks, right? Um, is this?
Yeah.
Uh, in the correct uh pool is the?
Yeah. Yeah, the the they're checking, but they're basically filtering out the proposal that the proposals that are not gonna make it onto the platform for voting. Because it's not gonna be all of them, because some are just not eligible, because the the application itself is just not correct. Because there are certain rules around applying, which we had town halls around the last two weeks. So if if proposals don't meet the uh the criteria or don't follow the rules, then they will not be put on the portal. So we need eligibility reviewers, which you can imply to be one.
I am.
Yeah, that that makes sense. It's just the term. Uh, it's kind of more like compliance. Because to me, like eligibility means whether people as individuals are eligible, but now this is more whether the applications are compliant.
Yeah.
Cool, thanks. On that note, what I offer, it seemed relevant last time, is because a lot of us end up, is they proposing or participating, uh, that we somehow kind of keep comparing notes, because then voting time comes. And we always appreciate uh getting an extra vote within, you know, amongst our friends and compatriots in this bunch. So I'd just like to, for us to find a way to keep informing uh and bending together within the ambassadors and bother uh various proposals that are being hatched amongst the membership.
So was that a question or a statement?
No, it's a, it's a proposal where um I was doing some of that kind of like impromptu for the round three, but I'd offer that it's still as relevant as ever to get early feedback, to get co-conspirators. And then when voting comes invariably, people end up recruiting support. So it's just that there is a bit of an overlap in participation at various levels between ambassadors and deep funding. And it comes to four right now during the funding round.
All right, uh, I do think, let me quickly double check that the deep funding channel on Discord has a link to the uh form, right? Yeah.
Yes, I can also find it because I think there's just lots of posts in there.
All right, uh, then if I remember correctly, I saw more hands. Taffo, I think.
Indeed. But we are with overtime, so I'm just gonna give you a teaser link to the motherboard. And that was like the same ideas for testing workshops. There is an idea that maybe instead of having a process with sessions separated from composite program, we we could use maybe one of those composite town halls to have like a thirty minute or forty five minutes segment into doing this uh decision making we did like last year around the like about around the ambassador program. How well are repetition organized? How predictable is our funding to recover enough and enough? And now we have more people too, and then we'll see again results, which I don't know which you mean, but we can see compare see what how it looks like now and how people understand the same questions too. Is our understanding the same? Yeah. So, yeah.
Uh, Stephen, a little bit of clarification there. Like, do you mean a micro session in a town hall?
Yes.
Cool. Yeah, quite. Um, yeah.
Although initially the idea was that we do the voting in this forum AI tool from anonymous. So so let's wait for the feedback. But if that doesn't come, then yeah, probably back tomorrow or something. If we find something light, that would be good. But it has to be easy.
All right, um, ah, there the application form uh pops into chat. Thanks, Judith. I do think that brings us to a wrap. Final check. Um, anybody, anything for now? All right, then that was tunnel number ninety five. Thanks all for being here and sharing your time with us. And hope to see you on one of the many upcoming community calls.